It's Tuesday, we're not going to see anybody's video.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How's everybody?
Doing well. You see, it's Tuesday, so nobody has their video on.
I'm good.
Except Kevin.
Kevin, you look showered even.
He's muted.
Yep. Barely. Yeah, that's not very good.
Is there a call-in number?
Uh, there is.
I have carpet installers on their way. They were supposed to be here between 8:00 and 9:00 a.m., and of course, they're late.
At least you get new carpet.
And I'm getting hardwood floors.
Nice. Better than my husband walking back and forth.
That was great. That was entertaining, though.
Picking up a phone call, I didn't know what to do.
If that's the worst Zoom bomb that happens during this whole COVID, for me anyway, then I'm good with it. Because I have seen some video that is little distracting, to say the least.
Um, I'm not seeing everybody's screen.
Hang on.
Is that you, Dewey?
It is. I'm admitting and trying to set up the live stream and... I think that might be everybody. Kevin is coming back.
Good morning, Mr. Smith.
Morning.
Inari? No. You sound like you're on a transistor radio. I can't hear anybody.
No one's saying anything, I don't think.
I know. Well... Let me turn my Bluetooth on, on my headset. Hang on.
There we go.
I can't hear you if you say something. I guess let's see, where's this one? Okay, let me come back. Where's Zoom on here? Where's my Zoom app? There it is, okay. Good morning, whoever's there. Who's there? Let's see. Let me get my switch to gallery. You know what? Here we are. There we are. I do have my calendar, you know. I think. There, okay. What time are we? 9:29. How is everybody?
Good. We're waiting on Kevin.
Oh, okay. I thought I just saw Kevin's in there.
He's been in and out because his microphone is...
Oh, oh, okay. Karen, I don't think you heard me, but you dated yourself by saying a transistor radio.
That's true.
I have two vivid memories of Christmas, and one was the year I got that silly little radio that I could carry around with me, and the second was when I got my first cassette tape player where I could record myself singing to my transistor radio.
Well, I don't know if I can beat that or not, but I remember when we got our first color TV.
I remember the first remote control, too, and that was a big family deal, man. Yeah, wow. Those big console TVs.
Hey, Liz.
Yes?
I've got a carpet installer coming. He's on his way. He was supposed to be here an hour ago. Um, I just may have to find him in my introduction stuff, and he, I just have to run down and... Do like a 30-second recess.
Okay. When, and this is going to be?
If, I'm only doing like the introduction, so I'm only talking for just like a couple minutes if he shows up.
Okay.
Knowing my lucky well.
So you want me to do a recess? Is that what you said?
Or just take like a little 30-second break for me to open the door and...
Okay, okay.
Sing and dance.
Okay. He's going to ring the doorbell right when you get there, right when we start. Okay. Boy, it's quiet.
Anybody been by town hall to see the tree?
I have not. Is it sad?
It was very sad. I think they took it down, part of it down yesterday. I don't know what stage they're at today.
Yeah.
Very sad.
Well, I was, I was telling Lisa on Friday, I mean, we've had a couple, we've had some bad storms like every night, but Friday evening, you know, I get the weather alert and it says, you know, lightning has been detected one mile from your location, point, you know, a half a mile. Well, Friday night, it, I had gotten two alerts, and each alert, it was getting closer. And the last alert I got, I picked up my phone and it said, lightning has been detected 0.0 miles from your area. And that, I, I think, I would say that's probably when it happened because our power blinked several times. I thought we were going to lose power, and it was right on top of us. It was pretty bad. So I'm, I mean, lightning was everywhere. So it was, uh... Did a tree at town hall get struck? Yeah, yeah, the big, the big pretty oak tree right in the very front, right when you walk around it, coming up the sidewalk is, yeah, it's gone. Oh, that's too bad. Yeah, it's, it's sad.
We'll have to find us something else to plant and do something nice.
Yeah. Yeah.
Karen, are we recording yet?
It says recording on my screen. Hey there, good morning. How are you?
Good. Is that any better? They said the audio was terrible before.
I can hear you okay.
Very good. Man, I'm back in business.
Do you want to, do you want to say a couple more things and make sure everybody can, can hear okay?
Sure. Good morning, technology-challenged Kevin here this morning. How can folks hear me?
Okay, that sounds good to me. If nobody can, if, if, if anybody else has a problem, speak up. Otherwise, we'll, we'll get moving here.
Good to go.
Great.
Okay. Karen, Dewey, are we all set? Are we recording?
Sorry, yes, we're all set.
Okay, okay, so I will call to order our special town council meeting Tuesday, July 21st at 9:34. And I will do a quick roll call through all of our council members if you are present, if you would just say, "Here," when I call you. M. Pruitt.
Here.
Janice Probst.
Here.
Jeff Paraman.
Here.
Mike Smith.
Here.
Very good. So we do have a quorum with all council members present. The adoption of the agenda. I will look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Pruitt, Paraman, Smith.
Aye.
Okay, so we did have a unanimous vote. We have adopted our agenda. And we are here this morning to discuss the Unified Development Ordinance for the Town of Weddington. And we have with us our town attorneys, Karen Walters and Kevin Rigawatt. And we are wonderful, we are so thankful that you all are here, and we, I'm going to turn the floor over to Lisa and, and then let our attorneys start.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, quickly to go over today's agenda, I'll do a quick interdup and then review our zoning map. Kevin, I think you've all received a copy of his executive summary by email over this weekend, so have that ready to review. We'll go through that executive summary and then review our subdivision approval process and procedures. We won't be making any decisions today.
Lisa, I did not receive that summary.
Okay. Hey, Karen, Dewey, do you mind forwarding that to... Mike? Did, did everyone else receive it?
Yes.
Yes.
Or anyone on council, do you mind forwarding to Mike?
Okay.
All right. So really quick, um, we, you guys heard this at the retreat, so I'll be brief as possible. A Unified Development Ordinance is a local policy instrument that combines our zoning and our subdivision regulations and any other ordinances that we want into it, into one single document. So right now, when I meet with a developer for a subdivision, I have to obviously go through this long subdivision process and then explain that our lot regulations are in zoning. And then when you're in your construction plan approval process, you've got your stormwater regulations and your erosion control ordinance. And oh, by the way, at the end, we've got our lighting ordinance, and your monument sign has to go through the sign ordinance. So by combining all these regulations into a single document, we hope to have one streamlined, coordinated development process that we can kind of hand anyone in the public or any developer, you know, this packet of our, our development regulations, that's, that's easy to understand. We also hope to remove any inconsistencies and eliminate any outdated policies. And then the last advantage is of doing this now is that the state legislators have adopted the 160D. We also talked to you guys about that at the retreat. They've taken the Land Use Authority given to municipalities and the, and the counties of 160A and 153A and combined it into one document, 160D. They gave us until December of 2020 to update our ordinance to comply with 160D. I think that has been extended due to COVID, too. The last I've heard was August of 2020. So the UDO...
2021.
2021?
I believe so. You just said August 2020.
Yep, you're right. So the, the UDO 160D updates can be like a slow, expensive process. I've here, I've heard adjacent towns trying to hire consultants here in the range of 70,000 to 120,000 to update our ordinances. Consultants usually don't know our, our local processes and reasons behind our ordinances, so you, you get this big document. You still have to spend time on staff and the attorneys to review. So we thought it was best to do it in-house. And then when COVID hit, we were able to use some of our extra retainer hours to, to get this started. So, so, so far, we've done all the work under those retainer hours, and we hope to continue that. That's kind of where we are in the process. And unless Karen or Kevin, you have anything to add, um, I can jump into our zoning.
Lisa, this is Kevin. The only thing I would add is just to, to level set for these, for these two meetings, and you, you said this in, in passing, is, is today is really informational and educational. No, no decisions today. I'll, I'll say this, from having gone through this exercise a couple times with, with others in the past. I mean, my personal goal here would be to have you all unanimously going forward with this and unanimous on the adoption of this at, at the end. If, if this goes well, like Lisa said, you'll end up with a streamlined document that's a, a win for the town because it'll be easy to implement the town's policies. It'll be a win for the property owners because it'll be easy to follow and, and conducive to their property rights, and it'll be, it'll be a win for the neighbors because protecting the neighbors will, will also be... So we're, we're looking for... Mostly, this will be a reorganization, streamlining, complying with statute. There will be a few recommendations that we'll share with you at the end of the meeting today. It will be the topic for your meeting in a week, where we are recommending some process changes to you folks. On the same page on that here, at the very beginning of the process, while we're talking about being effective and efficient with the, with the dollars and the time. What would be a fail would be for you all to spend a lot of time and energy, spend money on my law firm, and then we're unhappy with some, a product at the end over topics we could have talked about at the beginning, just, just, you know, big picture plans. And so while there's not going to be many things that are, that are changing, we do have a few things. And, and that's really what these two meetings is about, so to see if we can get hopefully unanimous direction on a few of these process changes. So again, today, informational, as if we were going to a school of government class together. Next meeting in a week, talking through some of these recommendations for a few process changes.
Okay, Kevin, let me, Lisa, if you don't mind, let me just, so are we looking for a, a, an actual vote today? I did hear you say that you want to have a unanimous approval of the procedure. So are you looking for, are you, are we looking for a vote, or are we all just going to kind of unanimously agree that we want to move forward with this procedure, Kevin? Is that what you're looking for today?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was not clear on that. So no vote today, no, no vote today. We will have a vote next meeting on, on a handful of, of, of process things that, that we'll...
Okay.
In detail here. And then what I will try to share is six or eight months from now, when we adopt the final product, I sure hope that goes unanimous.
Okay, very good. Okay, and if I could just also make a request that any of the cha, the recommended changes that you all would, would benefit, you think would benefit the town, if we could get some of those changes in writing just prior. So this is what, this is what you currently have, this is what we recommend the change to be. If that's possible to get it, that way, we can, that will give council a little bit of time to read over it, process what the changes are, and potentially ask any questions prior to next week?
Yes, ma'am. I think you'll be pleased with today's presentation.
Okay, all right. Well, I won't skip ahead. I'm putting the cart before the horse.
No, you're good. I absolutely understood, and, and, and look, we're going to try to do that all along the way, is, is...
Okay.
For it not to, uh, we'll, we'll also talk about like the whole calendar at the, at the next meeting as well over public input, planning board input, y'all's opportunity for input on the details along the way, and...
Okay.
We're all nodding and, and are 100% on board with wanting any changes to be very clear and transparent to everybody.
Perfect. That's it. So I'm going to mute my mic and I'm going to sit back and listen. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so you guys should all be familiar. This is our zoning map. Each parcel on here is assigned a zoning district, which each district includes your development regulations, your lot size, your setbacks, your permitted uses, conditional uses. We do not plan on making any changes to zoning, to the, to the existing zoning districts. You can see, we have a lot of green and yellow, which is all residential. We're going to concentrate on that subdivision process, streamlining that process, and then talk about conditional zoning. So any future non-residential, larger project has the ability to go through a conditional zoning process. Any questions on the zoning map? All right, I will hand it over to Kevin.
Very good. So do you all, all have now what I'm calling the executive summary of the Unified Development Ordinance? Has that made its way to everybody's hands?
Yes, I have it. Okay, yeah, I have it. I, I think that email was sent out to everybody, so everybody should have it.
So let me, let me level set with, with what you're looking at there. So what we decided to try to do here to, to kind of kick this thing off was to write a fairly short, it's really, I mean, it's three pages, a summary of what'll be a, you know, the ends, you know, several hundred-page ordinance. And our thought was, may very well even include this as the beginning section of the ordinance, when it's all said and done, is to give a hopefully reasonably easy-to-understand description of the entire ordinance and everything that we're trying to cover. So what I would like to do with you folks today is so we get everybody on the same page, a little bit of shared terminology, is, is go over this document that we've written. Certainly spend more time on a few of the key sections with the idea, if this goes right, within, you know, an hour from now, you all have a really good understanding of how this development ordinance ought to work and, and kind of what the categories of, of decisions are. So I will say also, please feel free to interrupt me with questions along the way because, because my goal in this, for sure, is to have you all with a shared understanding of everything. So if there's something that I'm not clear about, or, or, you know, jogs a question in your mind, please, please go ahead and speak up. And we go off script here a little bit because, and the idea today is to have all of us on the same page with a lot of the basics of, of how all these decisions get made. All right, so with that, I'm going to jump into the, to the document. You'll, you'll see by the titles, I'll, I'll kind of work through that, okay? So the, the section one is, is just jurisdiction. Where will this ordinance apply? And the answer is, of course, in the Town of Weddington and in any extraterritorial jurisdiction that you all may have, have one day. Section two is the who, who are the players on the field implementing the development standards? And, and those entities and, and folks involved are, of course, the town council, your planning board, Board of Adjustment, the town staff, and then you get some help from other government entities as well. The, you know, Union County folks help you with building permits, and of course, NC DOT is responsible for the roads primarily. So, uh, you'll, you'll have sections in the ordinance that describe in more detail, you know, what each of these, these folks do in, in the development process. Section three is an overall statement of planning that's really close to a quote from the state statute that you're required to have these zoning ordinances, are supposed to implement your, your plans. You all do have a, have a land plan, a comprehensive plan. I think you're working on, you know, you do updates on that. The zoning map we just saw, right, it's predominantly residential areas that are left to be developed. So the practical thing here, and this is why I'm in favor of you not being a consultant and getting a, you know, off-the-shelf, you know, ordinance that applies anywhere, is we're really talking about how do you all want that vacant residential land to be developed? And then to perhaps a little lesser extent, how you, that smaller core business area, how you might like that to continue to develop and redevelop. But the idea is that this ordinance is a tool that implements your plan. So here's where I'm going to slow down now, is number four, the processes and procedures. This is where I, I want to spend a good bit of our time today and kind of go forest for the trees for a little bit. If I took you to a school of government seminar, the professors talking about this topic would, would almost for sure start off sharing in, in the three types of decisions that occur in the development process. So they categorize them into three categories, and, and you don't really see this language in the ordinances like directly. You'll, you'll recognize some of the terms, but I, I don't know that I've seen a section in an ordinance that reads like this section A123 here, but I think it's a good idea. So here are the categories, and, and bear with me, and then we'll kind of go through some examples with it, all right? So the three categories are legislative, quasi-judicial, and administrative. Legislative, that's intended to describe the policy-level decisions. Should be you folks, right? That's what the council or the legislature in Raleigh or the legislature... That's what the council or the legislature in Raleigh, or the legislature in Washington DC is making the policy decisions. And there's a whole lot of discretion there, right? So setting the tax rate or something like that where the legislative board almost can do what it wants, right? Very broad range, it has to be arbitrary, capricious for it to be any kind of legal problem. So a lot of discretion. This is a process that typically involves a lot of the public engagement. Folks are allowed to lobby you, they should lobby you. So you try to get a lot of input from the public. And again, the idea is the legislature is implementing what the public wants in the development context. All right, this is the text amendments, this whole UDO ordinance adoption process will be a legislative process. When you do a rezoning of a property, it's a legislative process. And that's where you have these required public hearings with pretty broad public notice. And then in the development context, you have this mandatory planning board review. So this is, this would be a, you know, zoning as an example would, would be a legislative decision, very broad discretion, very broad input, governing board typically in charge of that decision. Category number two is quasi judicial. This is the, your quasi judicial means like quasi trial, like a court case. And it's got to be quasi something else, which is political or practical. But the examples that you all have in the development context, the, the primary one is a variance request. When, you know, the zoning board of adjustment hears, hears a variance. When you all used to do conditional use permits, that was a quasi judicial decision is, is the other example. And, and this is a more narrowly constrained process, okay? A little more legalistic, where you gather evidence to figure out the facts. And then you apply those facts to a standard that's set out in your ordinance and decide whether to vote yes or no on it. And it really, the, the idea should be it's a math problem in the end, right? If it's a variance, you have the four point test, you collect evidence from the witnesses, and the zoning board of adjustment decides whether the standards are met. When you all did conditional use permits, the idea was there was a set of ordinance standards. The board collects evidence to see if the standards are met. If the standards are met, you vote yes. If the standards are not met, you vote no. The public engagement is more limited here. It's supposed to be limited just to evidence on whether the proposal meets the particular standards. So getting, getting closer to a trial, you're not, you know, when nobody's asking local towns and non-judges to run hearings exactly like a Supreme Court or your trial court case would be. But that's the idea, is it, is it some of the basics of evidence based, no lobbying, no outside, you know, kind of policy discussions, trying to persuade people. It's supposed to be an evidence based hearing and a decision based on the facts. Right, third category of decisions, the administrative decisions. These are the bureaucratic ones, the ones that are typically handled by staff. There's not, the, the idea here is there's really not any discretion. If an application meets the standards, it's approved. If it doesn't meet the standards, it's denied. Minimal discretion, it, it's not a matter of whether somebody thinks it's a good policy idea or not. It, it either meets the rules or it doesn't. And with limited public engagement, if, if any, right? So, you know, you might see a building permit where everything is done, and it's just a matter of the technical people confirming that the house plans, you know, the HBAC system plans, you know, meet the building code or what have you. Or it might be something as simple as, I don't know, the, you know, sending the, you know, well, I mean, I always stay in the development context, you know, building permits, NC DOT driveway permits would be, would be the other good example. Where if the technical engineering standards are met, you're going to get the permit. Okay? Does anybody have any questions about that? Everybody's good?
Good.
All right.
Yep.
So let's go kind of circle through again. I gave some examples, but let, let's give the ones that are in your ordinance right now, okay? And this is close to all of them, these are the important ones. So what we would intend in this UDO, and this is very close to how you all do it now, what decisions would be legislative, right? They would be changes to the ordinance or changes to the zoning map. And that means text amendments, where you change the words. The zoning map, if you ever want to change the zoning map that Lisa showed you at the beginning on a global or, or just a general scale. And then we're going to talk about this one in more detail, but it, the conditional rezoning, where you change the zoning map on a particular parcel based on a particular site plan. And it's important to put a little star by this one, that, that this is a legislative process and is really would give your board the maximum flexibility on making decisions about changing the zoning. Is this conditional rezoning process? And it's really a little subset of a zoning map change. Okay, so I'm going to talk about that more in a few minutes. But these would be the big three that are legislative and in the town council's wheelhouse, for sure. But he's nodding there for a little bit, is that making sense?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Second category, again, quasi judicial. This is going to be your zoning board of adjustment with the variances and appeal from a staff decision. You don't get very many of these, but those, those are the two that will be in the ordinance. There will not be, I gave the example of permits. That, that's not, that's not going to be in the decision, like y'all aren't doing that. So my idea, the idea here would be that the council is not doing any quasi judicial decisions at all. That would be my goal for you. So let's, all right, let's go to number three, administrative. These are the ones that are typically handled by staff. And these would be the zoning permits, the grading permits, the building permits. And the topic we're going to discuss as a, as a possible change or clarification here is the subdivision plaques itself, okay? So what you all are doing right now, and I think it's probably the most confusing aspect of this, the way you all are handling things right now is when the subdivision plaques go through, you all are still handling that at the town council level, even though it's really an administrative decision and you all don't have any authority to make changes on that. So what we're going to talk about when we get to the end of this is whether we're going to revisit how that technical exercise of approving the plaque is better handled. I mean, it is an administrative decision, it's not something that y'all have discretion on. We're going to talk through the idea that the town council only hears things that are legislative and that you all in fact have decision-making authority to say yes or no to. And that we pass things that you have no discretion on, that we pass that down to your staff. So stay tuned, wheels ought to start turning on there. But again, your categories, legislative, a lot of discretion, council, quasi judicial, a little discretion based on facts and evidence, zoning board of adjustment, administrative, no discretion, typically staff in other places. Okay? Any questions on that topic?
No. Kevin?
Yes, go ahead.
Kevin, I'm sorry if I could go back. You mentioned the quasi judicial and the variances and appeals and that that is something that you do not recommend that we continue to have? Did I hear that correctly?
If I said that, I said that incorrectly. You, you will have variances and appeals.
It just won't be, okay, I'll let you keep going.
And, and they will be zoning board of adjustment handled, okay? Zoning board of adjustment.
So it won't be, and that's, and maybe I worded it wrong. So that won't be under the quasi judicial process? We will have it, it just won't be under, we will get rid of the quasi judicial process?
No, ma'am. So the zoning board of adjustment will handle those two items, a variance.
Okay.
And an appeal, and they'll be required to follow the rules for quasi judicial process.
Mayor, I think you.
Can I, can I say something here?
I think, Mayor, you're referencing the CUP special use permit process. That's what we're getting rid of for quasi judicial.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure I heard it and I'm, I'm listening and I'm listening, but it's, okay. I just, okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure so that, so it will, it, the, because I thought when you said that, I thought, well, how are we going to handle variances and appeals? It will just be handled by the board of adjustments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Was there another question that was coming?
No, I, I guess, I knew she was, where she was going with it. And I just wanted to say that we, the council was removed from the quasi judicial years back and put in, in front of the planning board for, for legal reasons.
So I. I agree with that legal advice, I think that was good legal advice that you gave me of that.
I just wanted to make sure Liz knew that we weren't doing away with it.
Well, that's, yeah, when I heard it, I just wanted to make sure that, you wanted to go back and make sure I, I understood it completely because it didn't sound right. Thank you.
So let's, let's talk about zoning and the zoning map just briefly given, and mostly conditional zoning. And this will tie to, you know, if you go back to kind of getting rid of that conditional use permit process, this, this is going to pick up that story when we talk about conditional zoning. All right, so the, so the basics again on your zoning districts, right? This is the, this is the primary tool, if you go for us for the trees for this whole development control, right? A town adopts a zoning map and identifies different areas of town where different things are allowed, right? So the R80 district is residential of X size lot, R60 X size lot, right? So to make it, we, we thought about, you could make yours almost a little simpler, right? You could have your residential district and your business district here. But we've decided it doesn't really make sense to cause any confusion about changing somebody's properties, you know, their zoning or what have you. We'll, we'll work with your existing map, so there's really no change to anybody's existing zoning classification through this process. But again, the, the big picture idea is that color coded map that, that Lisa showed you at the beginning. And practically for you all, you have a couple of areas of residential, a couple zones of residential, the green and the yellow that are up for development. So you've probably heard terminology of like, maybe you've heard straight rezonings and conditional zonings is the, the, the straight would be just changing a pre-existing district, right? You, you could have a hearing and choose to change a R40 color code on your map. You could choose to change it to any of these other districts that you wanted to, right? That would be a legislative decision that you all could make. And then the rules that are laid out for development in that district, you know, would apply wherever it's color coded that way on your map. So that, that would be just kind of the very basics. When zoning started in New York or wherever it started, they, they probably put on a business district for where they wanted businesses and they want, you put a residential district where they wanted houses. And then we get layers and layers of this over time, you know, over the history of our country here, all right? But that's areas of town set aside with rules set aside ahead of time. Now this part B, conditional zoning, this is what you all really want to focus in on and is the best way for you all to be assured of, of development that you all like. And this is what's commonly done across North Carolina right now, okay? Is this is a situation where you would allow property owners or developers who have property under contract with permission from property owners to petition the town council to consider creating a special zoning district or conditional zoning district. And these are districts where you basically are writing the rules for the district that apply to this particular piece of property as part of, of the process, okay? Now typically, you grab a bunch of rules that already exist, right? That the starting point is the rules that are already on the books. But you are certainly allowed to vary and have, you know, new rules or stricter rules or, you know, less strict rules or whatever combination it gets worked out. It also typically includes the picture, right? The actual site plan with a particular layout. And so in the subdivision context, if we were going to do a conditional zoning for a new residential development, it would include their site plan along with whatever rules were agreed to. Now the key points in North Carolina is that this is a voluntary process that's led and initiated by a landowner or developer. And that in the end, it's a vote based on what the applicant is willing to put before the town board. So you would go through the entire public process, including your, you know, community meetings, the planning board reviews, the formal public hearings in front of you folks. It's a process of the developer working with the town, neighbors. And you end up with a vote on a map and a plan that the developer is willing to put in front of you. And, and the council votes up or down on this. So this has been a tool in North Carolina that is very heavily used now. Because from the government side, folks tend to like it because it gives some very specific, property specific control and review and approval rights to the town. You all know what's going on, right? The property has to develop that way. Neighbors tend to like that because there's pretty good assurances then, right? That, you know, what, if, if there's public input, the plan's the plan. To change a conditional zoning plan has to, you know, go through an amendment process. So the neighbors tend to like it. And if a local government is reasonable in this negotiation, you'll find that the development community tends to like it because, you know, they can have a tailored product as well too. And the back and forth sometimes helps them, right? So we, the vast majority of development, other than, I'm going to say routine R3 residential, you know, third acre lot kind of stuff in Charlotte, ends up going through some sort of conditional zoning process. In, in, in Charlotte, for example, in the smaller towns, almost everything goes through conditional zoning as well. What we're going to try to get to here with you folks is the idea that there's a limited set of things that are allowed by right ahead of time. That if you do things a certain way, fine, it's already on the books. If you'll do XYZ, that's great. But if you want to do something different than what's essentially pre-approved by you folks, then the process is this conditional zoning process. So I, I would suspect when you all had the discussion years back of, let's stop doing CUPs and move them to conditional zoning is, is what. them to conditional zoning, is what I would think the conversation must have been, the idea there be that you can talk to people, you know, why is conditional zoning better than CUP? It's because it's legislative and not quasi judicial, which leads to a much more public involvement and better conversation. So we're gonna put a lot of stars by conditional zoning, the big picture idea for this UDO ought to be a few things that are allowed by right because we have the rules set aside ahead of time, everything else, conditional zoning, you all work it out as you go along with some preset parameters, but in the end, that you're evaluating things on a site-by-site basis.
And we currently have conditional zoning, I think the goal is to kind of open up the conditional zoning to allow for varying regulations for that specific site, so you don't have your standard regulations, you can make deviations to those regulations if you provide like a justification, you can go from a 50-foot buffer to 25 if you add, you know, whatever we negotiate, three rows of evergreens. So with a lot of pending projects coming up, I think we're gonna start using this conditional zoning more than writing development regulations for each project, instead of writing them on a site plan, a site-specific plan versus updating our ordinances every time a project comes through.
So if I'm hearing this correctly, we do have conditional zoning, which I figured, but this seems to be more flexible, gives us more options, and, and it's kind of written on the, on the go, is that, am I understanding that correct?
Yes, sir.
And because it's legislative, you guys have the ability to just say no versus a quasi judicial, if it meets the ordinances and the findings of fact bring you one way, it's, there's.
It doesn't pigeonhole us into it.
Right.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
That's right, and I'm gonna just pick up on your phrase, on the go, with that is, that's, that's accurate, being it's case by case, it, it will not be that it's just being made up out of like nothing though, on three minutes notice, right? Is, is all the ingredients for what will be adopted and made up as we go, the, the starting point is the existing rules on the books, okay? So if I have a creative idea for a residential development, and I come into Weddington and I say, okay, here's what I can do under a traditional residential development, here's what I can do under a conservation development, but I have a different idea, and it's a mix of both plus something else, right? And in order to do it, I'm gonna ask for some concessions on, I want some higher density, smaller lots in one area, and then I'm gonna try to see if I can talk you all into trading it for more open space than I'm required, and some common areas, and some architectural features that I, that you can't require otherwise, and I'm gonna help with the green, I mean, whatever I'm gonna do, right, is a, what a, what a private sector developer does is they start with whatever the closest set of rules are on the books already, okay? And somebody knows what they're doing, comes to a council and says, dear council, we're close to your base district R40, okay? And then they say, and here are some things that we want to do better, different, we think these will really benefit the community, they're better than what's on the books, and here's some things that some folks may think are worse than what's on the books that I need you to vary, and then they'll explain to you why they want to try to essentially make that trade, and, and you all can say yes or no to that, it's a good, you know, either it's a good deal or it's not, either the neighbors agree with it or it's not. And I've seen all variations of that, I mean, if, you know, a really good presentation on that and a really good process is a property owner works collaboratively with neighbors, town staff, NCDOT, and the variations end up being things that everybody agrees with, that they understand why I traded X for Y, and it's just if it, if folks communicate well in it, and you're gonna get to my theme here, if we have an ordinance that is fairly streamlined on process and sets up very clear places for communication with all the, I'll say all the stakeholders, and neighbors, property owners, the, you know, the, the other, you know, the NCDOT, whoever, it's got a really, it's got a really good chance to go well and get you a top-end kind of result, and it also gives you the chance if it's going poorly, because it's discretionary to say no, and just say, guys, this just isn't working, no hard feelings, but, but we'd like what we have on the books as our base, and you're just not doing better than that, so, so stop. So it's, it's a very flexible tool, I mean, look, it gets, it gets handled well places, it gets handled poorly in places, you could, I'm sure if, if we had the builders lobby here, they would have a mix of stories, you know, they would have complaints about, about where they would feel like the local government, you know, partners are overreaching and asking for too much, and, and then they'll have examples where they think it's, it's very, you know, fair and straightforward to work with, and it's my, my big picture thought to you is, you can be fair, easy to work with, and be very firm and strict on the results that you want, and in fact, you'll be better off being firm and strict if your processes are clear, and, and you'll, that's where we want to get, and it's definitely doable.
Kevin, you may have already said this, and I may have missed it, but is this, does this have to go through a reason, like if somebody wants to do this in a particular area, do we have to go through a rezoning process on this, like we would now, or is this plug and play anywhere we want at any time? Because there is an additional rezoning process that has to go through to, to get this in motion?
The, the conditional zoning is a rezoning process inherently, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, there's no, you, you don't get to just change your, anything on your zoning map right now that has CZ on it, somebody went through this process.
Okay. So, but if, if it's like an R40 and somebody wants to, you know, do a CZ, then they have to go through a process, or, or this?
If they want to do Cs, and we're gonna get to the details of this, sir, I'm gonna go ahead, I'm gonna go ahead, let me jump ahead just a little bit here with that.
No, no, that's fine, I, I.
But, I mean, let me go ahead and answer, a great question is, that what is a little confusing right now, the way you all do things with your subdivisions, okay? The, the first part of it, when you all look at the, you know, initial preliminary plan, you all are not, you all are doing things that walk and talk a lot like conditional zoning without calling it conditional zoning, okay? At the first part of the process, and then at the end of the process, when you all take a look at the final plat and there's nothing left to do, you're sort of treating that like a conditional zoning process without calling it that either, right? I mean, I, you know, you, you know, I know, I know we've told you, Karen, you know, you can't make changes here, guys, right? It's, it's not, it's not time to change the site plan around. So this, how do we set aside clearly what can be done without this legislative process? And then what, and then anything else that's not in that category of, and that's the by-right terminology, okay? By right, you can do these things without a new legislative conditional rezoning process. Everything else, and it might be things we flag ahead of time, it says these things have to go through a CZ process, and for that matter, anything, somebody has, you haven't even thought about, you come up with a new idea and petition it to do it, it's a free country, they can petition you for a ordinance change anytime they want it to, right? But to be clear, whether we're in a category of by right, where there's no council action, there's no discretion left, versus things that are discretionary and are in your wheelhouse, that's the theme of every change we're gonna, we're gonna suggest to you. Hopefully, that's a decent answer to your question, we'll revisit with some specifics here in just a few minutes.
Yeah, no, thank you, that did, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. All right, well, let's, um, let's move on to number six, and we'll pick up some momentum here again. Permitted uses, and I'm kind of gonna lap through a way, partly what I just answered on, on that question, right, just, let's check some vocabulary again here. By right uses and uses that are only gonna be allowed through the CZ zoning process. That's really the only two categories we're gonna have, all right? So certain uses of land under your ordinance now, and, and when we adopt the UDO, are gonna be allowed by right in the zoning, and by right meaning the rules are already written down, they're there, and if you follow the rules, you can do the development, okay? That would be without going through the conditional zoning. A little variation, this is my last sentence of that first paragraph, the ordinance provides for additional supplemental requirements for certain by right uses of land, so your ordinance now, and almost every ordinance has sort of extra rules that follow certain uses, right? So I can do a, you know, I don't know, a utility building by, I'll pick a, fumble over a good example here, but, I don't know, maybe you can do a park, will have extra uses that requires, you know, lighting to be facing in or something, that, you know, don't apply to a house. So you can have rules for the zoning district organized by use, and then some uses have an extra layer of special rules, but that can all still be by right if there's no other approvals, there's no legislative approvals needed, if you follow the rules, you can do it, all right? So that's the by right terminology. Everything else, I want to use the conditional zoning terminology, is if not by right, you need to go through a CZ, in some cases, your ordinance sets out some things ahead of time that says for this conditionals, this use that we'll allow through the public legislative process with input, here are some extra things that we need you to pay attention to upfront, and in some cases, you may not have anticipated them all, all right? You will end up with a, you have one now, but you'll have a modified version of this, with a use table in your ordinance that lists, I mean, you can't imagine every possible scenario, but basically every use that, you know, you all could think of that's in your list, you know, that's in your books now, will identify what zoning district they're allowed in, whether they're by right or conditional zoning, and whether or not there are supplemental regulations specific to that use above and beyond the ones that apply to that underlying zoning So takeaway again, just to try to be comfortable in this by right terminology versus the conditional zoning terminology, and Lisa, that's great, you're reading my mind, if, give them just a two-minute, you know, high-level view of that, of the permitted use table there.
Yeah, so we categorize the uses on the left to like residential, non-residential, your services, library, government facilities, all the way down to retail, so zoning districts are across the top, instead of having each zoning district in the ordinance now list out the, the uses that are permitted and conditional, we're just gonna chart it all and then have the supplemental regulation. So if you want to do an agricultural use, yes, this is allowed, but here's, it's allowed by right in these zoning districts, but here are some regulations that you're gonna have to follow, so we're in the process of charting that all out, and we'll make sure, if there's any changes to this chart from what we have now, that we'll, we'll bring it forward to you guys as we move through the process.
All right, well, let's go back to the executive summary, and I'm gonna kind of wrap all this up by reference to the table that we prepared at the, at the end of that, page three. Lisa, are you able to pull up that again? All right, so they, a legal saying is it's harder to write a brief-brief than a long-brief. I'm like really excited about this chart, this is everything I just told you in a chart, a quarter of a page. So to recap, the, the information session today, we talked about the types of decisions, identified the three, legislative, quasi judicial, and administrative. We talked about the approvals that are in anybody's development ordinance, and examples of each, so we have for legislative again, the text amendments, zoning map changes, and conditional zoning, which is really just a hybrid of text amendment and zoning map change, those are clearly legislative. Our examples of quasi judicial are the variances and the appeals of a decision by the zoning administrator. Our examples of administrative is the final subdivision plat, just the mechanics of that plat matching what's the approved development, and then the land development permits, zoning permits, grading permits, building permits, things that if you, you know, there's no discretion, there's not really public input, but if you follow the rules, you're, you're good, all right? We talked about who's the responsible party for each of these types of decisions, and the answer is council for legislative, zoning board of adjustment for quasi judicial, and staff or the outside staff for administrative. And I will just make the note that I have the one comment to the side, and when we're talking about the subdivision plat idea, is that includes confirmation that the proposed subdivision development is in conformity with the applicable zoning requirements that have already been approved really by the council, right? Either you've adopted them ahead of time in the ordinance where they're for by right uses, or you've adopted them at an earlier stage of the subdivision process if it's conditional zoning. So forest for the trees, legislative decisions, council, quasi judicial, your zoning board, administrative, staff, legislative council, very discretionary, yes or no, broad, broad range of policymaking authority, quasi judicial, follow the evidence, administrative, hands are tied on that discretion, follow the rules. So that's my one-hour class.
Very good.
Very good. Does council have any questions from anybody?
No.
Nope.
Nope.
So Lisa, why don't we go ahead and tee up the conversation for next week, we, we've talked about the possible changes here of, that the council right now has, is testing things that are really administrative in some places, and that we would really like to be crystal clear, what's the council's at a conditional zoning discretionary phase, and then what's really not, and that we're gonna recommend, hey, if it's, if it's not discretionary, that we could think about the staff handling that. So Lisa, I'm gonna turn over these slides to you, kind of go over current condition, current language, and then possible changes, and again, folks, this is what you all need to walk around the block and, and think about over the next week, okay?
So real quick, I just brought up our conservation subdivision process, at the top is the existing process, and the bottom is new draft process for you guys to. new draft process for you guys to think about. And, and we can discuss whether you guys want to go this way. But we're trying to move all the rezoning, design, review upfront at the sketch plan phase. So right now, we currently, for conservation subdivisions, we have a pre-application meeting with staff. We do the site walk, yield plan review, charrette. And then sketch plan goes to planning board. And planning board has approval authority. We then take a preliminary plat, review it administratively, get planning board's recommendation, and hold a public hearing. And at this process is when we're doing our rezoning. And technically, council should not be putting conditions on a preliminary plat. So we're trying in the bottom process to move your guys' approval authority upfront at the sketch plan phase. They're, they're required to do their TIA, they're, they're required to basically do a full set of plans. So you guys aren't missing out anything during the construction plan review. Um, so we're trying to move the approvals upfront at sketch plan. And then everything else is done administratively. And just to give you an example, you guys aren't really missing out on anything. I, I feel like almost anyone can do this. When I'm looking at preliminary plats and final plats, I'm looking for a title block. I'm looking for the north arrow, making sure the map has its bearings, has list all the adjoining property owners. So there's nothing technical, there's no design, there's no discretion. I'm, I'm just doing a checklist type of review. Um, this is just, you know, one example from our existing ordinance that I feel like staff should be approving so we're not wasting, you know, time and money towards the end. Right now, before you guys even see it, they've already have their construction plans done, which it's hard for you guys to make suggestions for any changes and almost illegal to, to add any conditions. It's just a checklist review. So, so the goal is to move all the approvals upfront. And then my job would just to make, be, to make sure that the preliminary plat and the, the final plat meet the, the conditions of that sketch plan.
Okay.
Change, and I, I want you guys to kind of think about that as before we meet next week.
Good.
Well, and this is, this has been, I mean, I, I know, but when I was first elected, I mean, there was a lot of frustration where I would sit down with Lisa and ask questions. And I'm like, this, you know, would question something or wasn't crazy about something or gave my opinion. And, and at that point, they were at the construction phase portion. And, and it's almost not reasonable to go back and to ask for a tremendous amount of changes to the builders. Not that, just simply because of the process. It's not, um, it's not very feasible to go in and make changes. And there was a lot of frustration with me at that point. I'm like, how did it get to this point? Well, that, that, this is how our process is. And it, um, in order for us to be able to have proper input and to really make sure that these conservation subdivisions are done in the manner that, that we want, this allows us upfront and it saves everybody time. So, um, I, I think it's a, it's a great start. And with all the work that, that Lisa has put in with, you know, getting finally after 20 years of getting our RCV ordinances properly written and, and a process that's the way they're intended, this is really the process that we should be in, in my opinion. So, thank you, Lisa, for that. And if there are...
I was gonna say, we also had some examples, you know, with the vintage creek where previous councils were making conditions on plans that we tried to go back and fix and, and find out it was not done legally right. So this puts everything up front. You guys out of trouble as well.
Honestly, I, I, I don't understand why we have not always been doing it this way.
There are a lot of things that we don't understand why we haven't done. I think sometimes like, you know, you know, you and I kind of look at each other and think, why are we doing it this way? Who knows?
No, I, I understand your frustration, you know, when you first come on and, and you, you don't understand the process. And by the time it hits you, you know, an idea, it's too late.
That's right. That's right. That's right. So I, I, I think we have a great start. I certainly appreciate, um, all the work you guys have put into it. Lisa, you've, you've worked hard and I think it's fantastic. Does anybody have any other questions?
Nope.
No.
No.
I'm good.
Okay. So our goal for, um, next week is to really hone in on some of these CZ changes and what else? Lisa?
Yeah, I think we'll go over, you know, the major conditional zoning change, subdivision plat approval change. Those are the two big changes. Everything else will be copy and paste. We might have...
Okay.
Stuff as we go through it. Um, I think we're gonna treat it like we did the land use plan update where we bring section by section to the planning board. And then you guys put it on your consent agenda so you're following and keeping up with it. And then be able to pull it off consent agenda to discuss any of the changes that you have questions on, you know, at a public meeting. But we'll talk about that process timeline and then get your consent on this script.
Okay. All right. Very good. Um, I guess if that is all, then we can wrap this up. Then I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Pruitt? Probst?
Aye.
Perryman?
Aye.
Smith?
He said aye.
Smith wants to stay on and keep going.
You know that's...
Yeah, I know. Okay. Thank you, Karen and Kevin, for your work. Thank you, Lisa. And, um, we will see you same time next week.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.